Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order today's Thursday, August 23rd, meeting of the Missoula County Board of Commissioners to order, and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any public announcements by staff? Okay, seeing none. Are there any public comments on items not on today's agenda? And there are agendas on the back table as you came in. If there's something on the agenda that you want to comment about, you'll have an opportunity later. Right now is an opportunity for anything else that is on your mind that will not otherwise be covered. Okay, seeing none. Our current claims list, this would be claims received as of August 1st, 2018 to August 15, 2018, by the Commissioner's Office. Total $3,000, 17,309.66. As I mentioned, we have a few public hearings today. I would invite everyone to turn off your cellphones or turn it to vibrate if possible, and that includes both staff and members of the public. If you have not done so, when you exit, please do sign in. On the back table is a sign-in sheet so we can keep track of who is here, who testified, and how to spell your name, most importantly. After I open the public hearings, there will be some staff presentations, followed by an opportunity for public comment, and then the Commissioners will deliberate and, in some cases at least, take action on items before us. One of the main items that we will start out with is our fiscal year 2019 budget, and there are a number of interrelated items here, and I'm going to simultaneously open up four public hearings. The first would be a public hearing on the final budget for FY19, fiscal year 19. The second would be opening a public hearing on a permissive medical levy, and there will be more explanation on that to follow. The next public hearing would be the proposed fiscal year 19 rural special improvement district budget. And finally, there is a correction, a public hearing on a correction in tax increment funds. So without further ado, I'll consider all those public hearings opened, and we'll begin with a staff presentation from our Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The process, so far, a public hearing was held, and we presented the preliminary budget on July 26th of 2018.
Andrew, for the record, you want to go and say your names?
My name's Andrew Charney. I'm the Chief Financial Officer from Missoula County. Sorry about that. So we held the preliminary hearing on the 26th of July. We received a number of calls and helpful input from the public since the preliminary hearing. I fielded a number of calls myself. The preliminary budget was built on assumptions of what certified property values would be, predictions. The county received the certified values from the DOR on August 3rd, and today we'll be presenting some of the highlights and recommending approval in the final fiscal year 2019 budget. Department of Revenue's certified values, I had projected, whoop. What's going on here? I projected 2.4% increase to $224,587 mill value. I was, okay. I had projected 2.4% increase on countywide mills. I was close, came in at .45%. The, I projected 1.7% increase on the county-only mills. I did a little better there, it was 1.03%. So this affected the budget in a negative way, but we were able to make up for it. I thought I'd take a look at other counties similar to our own and see if I could figure out why we, why we didn't get the increase I thought we would get. And so I took a look at counties with similar populations. Yellowstone, of course, being the highest at 158,000, and this is 2010 census and estimated 2017 levels. Cascade County increased a whopping 327 people. Ourselves and Flathead County were between 9,000 and 8,000, and Gallatin County gained So then I looked at the things that the DOR looks at, market value, taxable value, newly taxable and tax increment. And in Missoula County, you can see that our market value increased by .8%. Our taxable value increased by .61%. Newly taxable went up similar to last year at 3.37%, and the tax increment went up 3.95%. You can see Flathead County had a lot of newly taxable at 11.87, but Gallatin County dropped in their newly taxable 7.49%, which was interesting. They had, they have such robust growth there, you'd wonder why that happened. Cascade County, huge numbers, 29% newly taxable. And then Yellowstone County, although they had a increase in market value, oddly enough, 1.13%, they were down in every other category and down 21% in newly taxable. So you want to guess what happened? The largest increase was Cascade County. $15,240 added to their mill value. Then Gallatin County, which had a negative newly taxable growth. Then Flathead County, then Missoula County, $977 increase. And then Yellowstone County had an actual decrease of $3,410. So I'm still searching for answers.
Although, Andrew, I think you found out that Cascades was, they added on to a refinery there, so made a really big investment in the industry.
That's correct. Yeah, that is correct. So between the preliminary budget and the final budget, we went down in mills requested, and it's kind of an oddity since we had gotten lower than anticipated mill values, but there were some reasons for this. Perhaps the biggest reason was, in late July, the Missoula County deputies voted to get out of Social Security since they're covered by SRS and it's allowed by state statute. This resulted in a reduction of the county match to Social Security of $600,840 per year. So that was a big boom to our budget.
And just for clarification, that's Missoula County Sheriff's deputies, not deputies of any other sort, so, thank you.
And also here, the SRS is Sheriff's Retirement System. We talk about SRS potentially later, and it means something different, so. They vote, they opted out, yeah, they're covered by retirement, Sheriff's Retirement System.
Good point. The final budget also had a one-time payment of $502,000 from the city's URDs. The Commissioners have decided that 60% of that amount will be used to reduce property taxes this one year, since it's a one-time payment, and 40% will be deposited in the fund for replacement or refurbishment of existing assets that we started prior to the last fiscal year. And we also increased the permissive medical levy. The legislature recognized in fiscal year 2000 that there was, there was a need for permissive medical levy to assist counties in covering the employer's share of employee health costs. Since 2000, employer health costs have gone up approximately 250%. During that same period, employee health insurance costs have increased just over 600%. The average employer contribution per employee each month is $815. Existing permissive medical levy, we've used it once since 2000, covers $215 of that amount. The proposed fiscal year 19 levy would cover an additional $198. By increasing the permissive medical levy, which is based on the percentage of people in each fund, we've been able to slowly lower the countywide mills. And talking about some of the increases of note, in the Sheriff's Department, we had over a $350,000 increase for new medical contract at the detention center. It's offering expanded mental and physical health services and on a 24-hour basis. We're purchasing a new body scanner and metal detector for the detention center for inmate, officer health and safety. And we are increasing the levies to the detention center because of the lower state reimbursement rate for state inmates at the detention center, and we're adding a sheriff's deputy. Increases in community planning services included the full payment and maintenance costs for the county portion of Fort Missoula Regional Park now that the park is completed. The second phase of the Missoula County zoning regulations update project. Continued work on the county's climate change resiliency plan with an Energy Corps person. Other increases of note, the road department. We had lost SRS, and it was, it came back, but we stopped the dust abatement program before losing the SRS funding. Now we've increased the, we have the SRS and we've increased the amount of money going to the road department to increase road maintenance, replace several pieces of aging heavy equipment, and restore the dust abatement program at its previous level. The clerk of court, we have a number of increases to support a 5th district judge, including a new clerk, and increases in the attorney's office for increased workload and expert witnesses in the recent murder cases. There's a projected 11.07 mill levy increase proposed in the final budget. 6.59 mills are voter-approved for library project. 4.48 mills cover costs associated with budget requests. This is a 4.88% increase in property tax revenue. 2.9% of this increase is attributable to voter-approved library bonds, and 1.98% of the increases for essential county services. This translates into a $28.89 increase annually in a home in Missoula with a DOR appraised value of $200,000. Of that amount, $17.79 is for voter, for the voter-approved library, $11.10 is for essential county services. The second part of the budget is the RSID budget, and this is one we attach to the normal budget each year. Assessments are collected and distributed, allowing one lighting district, four water and sewer districts, six park and common area districts, and 12 districts are paying debt service to serve their functions. Total revenues are $2,474,559. Total expenses, $2,888, and they currently have a reserve balance of $4,150,450. So with that, the recommended actions are considered adoption of the fiscal year 2019 budget, fiscal year 2019 RSID budget, the addition of 6.57 mills to the permissive medical levy.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Next, we have Erica Grindi, our Director of Risk and Benefits. She will talk a little bit more about the permissive medical levy that Andrew alluded
Thanks, Commissioner Stromeyer. As mentioned, my name is Erica Grindi. I'm the Director of Risk Management and Benefits for Missoula County. The primary reason you're hearing from me today, I'm not a typical presenter at budget hearings, but with the permissive medical levy being used this year, the Commission thought it was important that the public understand where we're at with the county's benefits plan. Sure.
Erica, could you pull the mic a little closer?
Yes. So I'm going to give a brief overview of the plan and hopefully provide an indication of where the plan's at in terms of premium rate increases, as well as how we're managing expenses for the employee benefits plan. So for those of you that are not informed in terms of how the county is insured for medical benefits, the county is self-insured, and we also administer our own benefits in-house, meaning we don't use a third-party administrator. We employ 5.7 full-time equivalents within the Department of Risk Management and Benefits, and those 5.7 employees are dedicated to the management of the county's medical benefits plan. Those individuals work on adjudicating medical, dental, and vision claims. They don't work on pharmacy claims. We do use an outside service for that called a PBM or Prescription Benefit Manager. And as I said, the Benefits Department is within the Risk and Benefits Department of the county. So rates for the county benefits plan are set annually, and those rates are approved by the county commissioners. The way that the plan comes up with rates to present to the commission is utilizing an outside actuary who looks at our financials. So they're going to look at the historical trends in terms of all of the medical, dental, vision, prescription claims that are presented to the plan, and then they're also going to look at our expenses on the plan. They use that in a science that I'm not skilled enough to give a lot of detailed information on, but they use that to forecast the future of the plan to ensure that Missoula County has a trust that will, you know, hold for future expenses and claims. And so the actuary typically is pretty conservative in what they present to the county in terms of recommendations for rate increases. So it's my job, as well as our plant administrator Heidi Fritsch's job, to use the results from the actuary to then present to the Commissioners our recommendations for rate changes. Those are done in a public meeting, typically at an administrative meeting. So when you're looking at the county's benefits plan, the health insurance rates or the medical insurance rates cover both medical and prescription claims. There are then separate rates for vision insurance and dental insurance, as there's three separate plans, and there's also different elections for employees. So now to get into where we're at as a plan, the rates are set in four different categories. So as an employee, you can elect to be covered as an individual, so just an employee rate. We have an employee-child rate. We don't, doesn't matter how many children you have, it covers one or five under that rate. And then we have employee spouse, so no children on the plan, and then we have family, where it would be spouse and child or children. Again, one to however many dependents you may have. So now looking at the trends. Andrew mentioned an $815 a month per employee rate. I think it's important that the public understands that's not a flat rate. So from the financial perspective, that's an average. It's going to vary depending upon what coverages you elect. So when we look at this, I'm going to go through, this first slide shows employee coverage. So at the present time for 2019, an employee would have $19.85 paid towards dental coverage. That would be 100% of their dental coverage per month. And then per pay period, they would have $272.31 paid towards their medical insurance, and that is per pay period. We have 26 pay periods. The important thing to note on this slide that I hope these trend lines can show is, you know, you look from 2001 to 2006, 2007, and there was a pretty good increase in terms of what we were seeing for the rates and the premiums that the employer was paying for employee coverage. Then you see a decline. There was a change in plan design at that time. So that means that I believe, and I will be honest, I've only been in this position for 18 months, and I've only been at the county for five years, but I believe at that time that the coverage was an 80/20 plan, meaning that the covered member was paying 20%, and the plan was picking up 80%, and I believe there was no deductible at that time on the medical plan. So obviously, when you see a trend going up like that, you've got to make a change. So the Commission, through the Benefits Department, made a change in plan design and was able to get a grip on the costs. Then you see a decrease for a short period of time, and if you, you know, know anything about the landscape of national healthcare, you'll see, starting in 2009, pretty steep upward trend. It's not uncommon. That's Affordable Care Act coverage. So it's pretty common to see that trend. There were a lot of mandatory coverages that came into play under the ACA, and plans similar to Missoula County's struggled to figure out how to make that work in terms of managing those costs that weren't always part of the plan. So you see that trend increase to 2013. I think the really important picture right now is to look at 2013 to the present. During that time, Missoula County hasn't seen an increase over 4% in its contributions towards employee coverage. And that holds true. I'll go, I'll go through these next slides for each coverage, but you're going to see the trend lines look pretty similar to this. It doesn't, it doesn't change much. I guess the other thing I would note is this bottom green line, the employee contribution, the only current contribution would be for vision coverage. The county's not putting anything in for employee vision, but everything else is 100% paid if you're, if you have an individual policy. So similar, similar trends here with employee spouse, other than you'll note that there's greater contributions by the employee, and the same holds true for family. There was a drop in 2008 that was fairly significant for the employee contribution, and I don't know the full backstory there, but I would suspect that the actuary realized that that family coverage was picking up more of the other expenses than it should. So basically, if you were paying for family coverage, you were paying for, for more, more of the members who are not on family policies than, than should have been picked up by others. So moving into expenses, because it's not just all about rates, the expenses obviously are going to drive, drive premiums in a pretty significant way. I think it's important for you all to see exactly how these break out. So what you'll, what you'll note is that I've broken these down into operations, which are going to include just general office operations, office supplies. It's also going to include contracted services, like our actuary. We do use outside accountant. We do pay for an audit annually, and we have some outside consultants that are specialists in the benefits realm that help us out. We have a personnel cost. Stop-loss insurance is going to be an excess layer of insurance that the county, county holds currently. If we have a member in one year that spends more than $425,000 between their medical and pharmacy expenses, then that stop-loss insurance is going to come in. It is on an annual basis, so that's not a lifetime. That's, that's annually. And then the claims data, which is, is very important. What I will say is those top three categories, operations, personnel, and stop-loss, are areas that I feel like we can control to some extent in terms of, you know, I can keep an eye on operations expenses. I can certainly work on ensuring that we have the accurate number of personnel and that we're not, you know, we don't have too many in there and that we're, you know, utilizing them to their full extent. And then similarly with stop-loss, we can negotiate those rates. Claims are a little bit more difficult to control. You know, we can't predict when members are going to have large claims. So we're going to start with the claims data. Health claims are, you know, they're continuing to rise. We do what we can in this realm to contract with providers and facilities to negotiate rates, but we are not alone as an insurance plan to see health, health costs increase. So it's not necessarily a reflection of the health of our employees. It's, it's much more of a reflection of just costs in the industry increasing. Dental claims, they were on the rise. They went down last year. That's just one of those things where, you know, it's just one of those years. I don't think that, that it's necessarily anything that we have done as a plan. It's just, we take, we take years like this as, you know, one of those where we can recoup some costs. It doesn't mean rates drop just because you see a decline in one year, so it would have to be over a pretty significant amount of time. Vision claims, the same story, held pretty consistent. While it looks like there's an upward trend, it's really not a significant amount of money. It's about $30,000, which over time is, is not going to be something to change rates. Prescription claims is an area that a lot of plans are struggling with. We've made some design changes this year. We had a very successful fiscal year 18 in working with our Prescription Benefit Manager and saw a pretty, pretty steep decline. This is not a reduction in the number of prescriptions that we're seeing among members. This is some good negotiating on our pharmacy benefit manager's side and getting a good contract with them. So hopefully that trend continues because pharmacy costs are a place where insurance plans are really struggling lately. And I will say that this is 100% of the reason that there was no rate increase for the county this year for medical, dental, or vision insurance. Stop-loss coverage, we moved to a new stop-loss carrier. Like I said, you know, this is an area where you just negotiate. We work with insurance companies, and they're always playing against each other, and so this is one of those areas where we were able to see some savings. This is an incredibly expensive part of the, the benefits budget, but you cannot go without it, because if we saw just a handful of individuals exceed that $425,000 level, the county would face a huge increase in terms of premiums. General operations, this is one of those areas that we certainly look at, you know, at least weekly, if not daily in my department, and we're doing well. We're holding pretty strong in terms of, of operations expenses, which speaks volumes mostly to my staff in keeping, keeping these costs down. Personnel expenses, so you'll see a dramatic reduction in FY18. This has nothing to do with a reduction in staff at the Risk and Benefits Department. It's really a shuffling of where we have those FTEs. So I moved a half, a half of an FTE, so we had a 1.0 FTE in benefits. I shifted half of that to our work comp department because the individual was spending half of their time doing work comp. So that's really, that's really the savings there. It is not necessarily a reduction in staff. The other thing, we do have a few new people, including myself, in that department, so it's just some, some savings on salary lines. So, it's just some savings on salary lines. So, I think, you know, the big summary is the plan's doing well. I think a lot of insurance plans would love to have these numbers on their side. And so, really, what I want the public to understand is, you know, the county's choosing to use these permissive medical mills to catch up, but it has nothing to do with the present time or even the last five years in terms of where the plan's at. And I would hope that Andrew would agree that this is not one of those things where we're concerned in the next year or even five years that we're going to see a dramatic increase here. We're managing things very well. We have, you know, a staff in the benefits department with a great deal of experience. And so, we hope to keep these trends continuing. If not, maybe get a grip on the health claims and see a decrease like we have in the pharmacy line.
Thank you, Erica. So, next, we have our Rural Special Improvement District budget. Andrew or Greg, is there anything you want to elaborate on that at this time? Okay, then we'll move on to... Dori Brownlow is going to tell us a little bit about a correction to our tax increment district funding.
Thank you, Chair Stromiron Commissioners. So, this is listed as a hearing on today's agenda, and we have a proposed resolution for the commissioners to consider, but it's not necessarily a required hearing under the Budget Act. And it's probably not too important for what we're doing, but I wanted to clarify that. So, there's nothing really special in the budget except for the items have been included in the budget that I'll discuss. So, this particular resolution deals with the Missoula County Airport Tax Increment Industrial Infrastructure District, which is a district located out at the airport. It includes the airport and generally from, say, Big Sky Brewing down to Butler Creek Road. And this district was started in 1991. It had several amendments to the boundary. In 2005, the county determined that there were properties located within the district boundaries that had, after the district was formed, they had become commercial properties. And pursuant to the tax increment statute, the county determined it was appropriate to redesign the boundaries of the district to remove those commercial properties. And that took place and was filed with the Department of Revenue. Unbeknownst to the county, in 2008, the Department of Revenue brought those properties back into the tax increment district, which meant that those commercial properties were paying tax increment funds into the tax increment district. We discovered this just earlier this year and made the decision that it was really appropriate that those funds be paid out to the districts that would have received those if the boundaries, if the payments had been as the boundaries were to be. And so, that's what this resolution is, to authorize that payment to the tax jurisdictions that are attached to the resolution. It'd be one-time payment to those districts. Would note that this district is sunsetting. And for our last payment, I reviewed, and these properties were removed for the first half of 2018. So, we won't hopefully need to revisit this again.
Okay, thank you. So, we have four public hearings open right now. Just as a reminder, we have a public hearing on the tax increment correction that Dori just described, a public hearing on our FY '19 Rural Special Improvement District budget, and that includes districts such as lighting, sewer, water, parks, et cetera. We have a public hearing that is on the permissive medical levy that you heard Erica and Andrew discuss. And finally, the public hearing that is currently open is on the final FY fiscal year 19 budget, which includes all of that stuff together. So, at this point, this is your opportunity for public comment. If you could come to the mic and state your name for the record, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Brevity is always a virtue here. And please direct your comments to the chair. So, come on up. And you might need to activate the mic. There should be a button there that turns the light green.
Excellent. Thank you. My name is Jerry Christensen. I live in Houson. I'm a lifelong Montana resident, except for 20-some years in the service. 4.88, is that correct? That's what the tax increase is going to be this year?
Is that correct? Yes.
What was it last year? Can you tell me? About the same, I think, was 3.85. And the year before that. I guess my point, I'm retired on a fixed income. A lot of the people are my neighbors of the same situation. I would say my retirement's probably better than a lot. I know people that are having to forego medication to pay taxes. I know the state cut their budgets this year. I never hear of anything about cuts. The bottom line to me is that we don't get, I don't get a 4.88% increase in my retirement every year. I know there's a lot of people moving out to the county. Between Houson and Frenchtown, a lot of houses have been built. I talked to these people. And one of the reasons they're moving out there is to get away from the mayor and the city council and their incessant tax increases every year. 5%, 6%, 4%, 5%. They just, you know, they're being taxed out of their homes. I don't want to see the same thing happen to me, my retirement home. I bought that property out there in 1988 when I was still in Alaska. I know that, I have talked with a lot of my constituents out there, my friends and neighbors. We're a lot closer to Mineral County than we are to Missoula County. And now, there's talk, and I don't know if we're going to pursue this or not, we're going to have some more meetings about it, trying to be annexed into Mineral County. I know we're only eight miles from Alberton. I know we're in Mineral County. I think we're about a mile, maybe two miles. But that's where we stand. There's no provisions, as far as I know, if you're a retired person, a senior citizen, for any tax relief. None. I know a lot of states do have tax relief for veterans, for retired people. If you're over 65, I don't see any of that. Maybe that's something the county needs to address. But there are people out there that are hurting. They're worried about being taxed out of their homes. Where am I going to go? You know, I know a lady right now said, "Well, I may have to go live with my daughter." You know, she has a lot of medical problems. You know, the taxes are getting to the point. You know, it's impossible. And like I say, there's more. I'm not just talking about myself here. I'm probably better off than most. But there are a lot of people that are hurting. And I don't, you know, I never hear about tax cuts. I never hear about tax cuts. You know, budgets can be cut. Anyway, that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen. Additional public comment? Come on up. Don't be shy.
Thank you. My name is Vicki Dundas. I am a nursing supervisor at the Health Department. Can I move this down?
That's the top tip, so you'll break it off there.
I'm here again this year to thank you for your support of our Missoula Foster Child Health Program. We're requesting a continuation of our community assistance funding for this program. As you know, the Missoula Foster Child Health Program serves all children age 0 to 18 years old in foster care, focusing on the most vulnerable. Children entering foster care for the first time are transitioning to new placements, children 0 to 5 years old, and teens ages 16 to 18 who are aging out of care. Since our first CAF funding in 2012, we met 100% of our program goals 100% of the time. Those being assuring each child entering foster care has a primary healthcare provider, a dentist, and referrals to needed specialty care, promoting coordination of care between the various medical providers, developing individualized plans of care for each child, and summarizing their health needs for foster parents and Child and Family Services Division staff, and providing health-related education and assistance to foster parents. Since its inception in November 2011, we have served 686 foster children and their families, ensuring that their high-risk health needs are met. In 2012, our Foster Child Health Public Health Nurse, RN, received about 150 referrals from CPS and admitted 106 new children. Nearly half of these children were placed in kinship care, about 44% with family. 28% were placed in licensed foster homes, 13% in shelter care, and 15% in group homes. Kinship care placements often necessitate a higher level of involvement by our nurse than children placed with licensed, trained foster parents. So, all the more important to have the nurse available as the kinship care placements increase. In FY '18, our public health nurse engaged in about 330 individual encounters with foster parents or providers and averaged a monthly caseload of about 45 children. As noted last year at this meeting, this program was mentioned in Governor Bullock's Protect Montana Kids Initiative and his implementation plan as being an integral part of the state's plan for improving foster care in Montana. Additionally, our formal evaluation process last year with the University of Montana showed positive outcomes for all children participating in the program, potentiating a best practice model that can be replicated in other states. Our program was also mentioned as a promising practice in the American Psychological Association's 2018 winter newsletter. Through these various levels of commitment at both the state and local level, this program has gained national and international attention, thanks in large part to the critical support we've received from you. This recognition and support has also enabled us to leverage additional sources of funding to help provide sustainability, including reinstatement this spring of a per-child stipend from Child and Family Services Division. Unfortunately, the severe cuts we experienced in target case management Medicaid funding have not been reinstated, about 80% of our funding, making your support of this program more crucial than ever. Thank you again for helping provide this vital safety net for our most vulnerable young citizens. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
My name is Sharon Sturbis. I was just curious, I mean, I know this is a question-answer, but my comment is that I noticed that, under budget requests, the largest ticket item I could see was for the South Avenue Bridge, for $675,000. And I just didn't understand what this was for because this is a project that has not finished environmental review. I don't believe that it's even possible to build into 2022. And yet, that's a large chunk of money. And I just don't understand what the purpose of this is.
Yeah, thank you. And I think I can address that. So, this is 100% pass-through money from Montana Department of Transportation and federal highways, earmarked for completing the environmental analysis. And also, my understanding is that it would be for final design of the proposed bridge. So, a portion of this would be completing the analysis in order to make a decision on the project. And I should say that personally, I do have some real reservations about the project as conceived and whether or not it should be a categorical exclusion or a full EA or EIS. My hope would be that the path that is chosen forward, if it is more robust analysis, these monies would go towards that. This is not construction money. Can I share, Curtis?
I just wanted to add that there's an equal amount of money coming into the budget. So, if you look, you can see the revenue, you see the expenses. It just needs to be reflected in the budget. But if there's something happens that you don't go forward, the money doesn't get spent. But after 20-some years of looking at this bridge and having two suggestions, I think we can go forward and that we should have the first documents in the next month.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment? And again, while you're thinking about this tantalizing opportunity to comment, the things that we are commenting on here would be the tax increment district increment correction, the FY '19 Rural Special Improvement District budget permissive medical levy, and then, the final fiscal year 19 budget. Come on up to the microphone, please. And please state your name for the record.
My name's Webb Harrington. Erica did a great job in her presentation. It's a permissive levy for this medical. Did I understand her correctly that there is no deductible for employees?
I don't think that's quite right. Ms. Grindy, would you like to clarify?
Sure. So, when I said no deductible, that was reflecting those early years. And then, a change was made, I believe, around 2008. And so, at the present time, there's a $500 individual deductible on those policies. Correct. And then, it was changed to a 70/30. So, now, instead of that 80/20 cost share, the plan pays 70% once you met your deductible, and then, the employee is responsible for the 30%.
That's a good clarification. Thank you.
I apologize for not letting you know.
So, everybody's worried about property taxes. I wanted to figure out whether in Missoula County, whether our property taxes were really that high. So, last night, I just did a little bit of investigation in its taxrate.org. And in that, it says that Missoula County's property taxes are the highest in the state. But also, what I found interesting was that Missoula County has one of the highest median property taxes in the United States and is ranked 374th out of 3,143 counties in the order of median property taxes. Missoula County is ranked 341st of the 3,143 counties for property taxes as a percentage of medium income. What's happening is we, as you, as we allude to the gentleman that spoke first, is we are pricing people out of living in a wonderful place that we've built. We can't have livability expenses nullify being able to live in the county. So, I know there's hard choices, and I know it's not easy, and your jobs are hard. But I think we need to become more aware of just the impact on those with fixed income and those that are making minimum wage. And property taxes also impact rent. And we're really good about supporting our schools, supporting our public library, supporting our community, and I hope that continues. But we need to find a way that we can actually afford to live here as well as pay for everything we want. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Ms. Harrington? Additional public comment on any of these items related to the fiscal year 19 budget? Okay, I will close all four public hearings and ask, are there any questions of the commission?
I don't have any questions. I did want to make some comments. So, I agree with the speakers today that we have to figure out how to not continue to raise taxes, but part of it is the voter-approved. And I know that when you go to these national sites and stuff, they don't pull that out. But, you know, the library, as you saw, is going to be the one that adds the big thing here, but our community supported that. Also, when, I don't know, does Mr. Christensen leave? Okay. When he talked about the state making cuts, they did, on the backs of all of you. So, while the state has other things they can do to raise taxes to pay for services or to finance services, the only tool that cities and counties have currently is property tax. And so, when something, when the people need a service or want a service or want a new library, it goes on your property tax. So, some of those states... So some of those state cuts that were made, like cutting targeted case management, that meant people here are not getting some services. And programs in the Health Department, for example, have been cut, as have the Mental Health Center and many other providers in town. When the state decided that they are going to save themselves some money by only paying the county $69 a day to house someone in our jail, the cost of providing that service did not go down. It's more than that. When they decided to cut mental health services, services to folks with disabilities, those needs and wants and actions didn't go away. There is one, I was wishing Mr. Christiansen was still here because there is, for folks that are on limited income, there is one program through the state that you can sign up for. Well, there's a couple. One is the Elderly Homeowners Credit, which they can get for rent or house that they own. And then there's another one called PTAP that you can sign up through the Department of Revenue that will cut your taxes based on your income. So there are those two things. But all of those things, all the revenue-based laws are made by the legislature. So they aren't things that we have control over. So the county does collect, you know, you get one tax bill. We collect taxes for all the jurisdictions. So there are things on there that you'll see that you're paying for city services, you're paying for county services. All the voter-approved things are outlined, so open space, the library, the museum, Fort Missoula Regional Park and Trails Bond that was on. We've received a couple email comments today about the budget from folks that also don't understand how we don't control the schools' budgets either. So when the schools' last legislative session, the legislature said, "We're not going to give you quite as much money as we should from the state, but we'll allow you to do permissive levies." And permissive levies means you can levy the money without a vote. So some of those things happen because that's how we finance schools in Montana. And of course, we're all proud of our schools. The RSIDs, I just wanted to clarify, all of those are things that are paid for by people who use them. So there, I have an RSID at my house that pays for the streetlights, for example. But the ones, that's a city one. The ones that Greg's department oversees are things like Lolo Sewer and Water, different sewer and water districts throughout the county. We have a refuse district in Sealy, those kinds of things. So they're, they go to the folks that use them. And then, of course, we collect for all the special districts. So fire departments, not the ones within the city, but the Missoula Rural Fire, French Town Fire, Sealy Lake Fire, we collect their money, a couple cemetery districts. So I guess what I want people to start thinking about is, yes, taxes. If you take your taxes and divide it by 12, it's a lot of money every month that people are having to take out of their income, whether they have a lot of it or don't have very much. But I'm challenging people to start thinking about the other tools that we don't have in Montana. And we need to talk to the legislature, we need to have, talk to our friends, and we need to talk to our community about things like local options tax and sales tax. So we have a beautiful park at Fort Missoula right now. And it has attracted folks here for, we had the state soccer tournaments for the high school, for both boys and girls. We've had soccer tournaments where folks came from Canada and states around us. We had, you know, the annual big rugby thing happened out there. We have softball tournaments. All those folks that come here from out of town, if they rent a hotel, they're going to pay some tax. If they rent an Airbnb, they're probably not paying nothing. They pay some gas tax, which we did, the legislature did raise the gas tax last time. And if they eat in a restaurant, you know, the people that own the restaurant are going to benefit some. So there's bed tax and gas tax, it's kind of it. So they don't help us to pay for that, and we just, the counties' share of the maintenance on Fort Missoula Regional Park alone is over $300,000 a year. So we have to figure out how to have that. And I've been amazed, as I've talked to people about this in the last few months, they're all going to kick me out of the Democratic Party and I don't really care, is that people don't even know that our constitution limits the sales tax to 4%. So we don't have to be scared that we're going to look like Washington, D.C. with 22%. We can start thinking about it. In Missoula County, the number from the Garner Report that was done by Missoula Economic Partnership this spring shows that retail in Missoula County, and I think it was 2016, a quarter cent tax, one-quarter cent, would have generated $5.6 million. Now, that could have been, you have to tie it to property tax. You have to tie it to income tax and reduce those things. You can't just add a tax, for sure. But we need to talk about it because we have 11 million visitors come to Montana every year that spend $1,000 a day or more. And we're not getting any of that to help us to provide all the services. So I hope you'll start talking to your neighbors. I hope you'll go home and pull out your state constitution and see it really does say 4% in there. And I hope you do realize that we, I mean, we spend months on this budget trying to figure out what service in this community can we do without. And, I mean, we don't grant every request. The sheriff would like to have a couple more deputies. He'd like to have more of them be in the schools because it's important. But, you know, we're trying to do this incrementally. We're trying to do it, keeping in mind people's budgets. We just made the last payment in July for the jail bond, so that jail is now paid for. Of course, that means the roof's 20 years old, the furnace is 20 years old, the washing machines broke down last year, those kinds of things. And we have started setting money aside in a fund for that. We've also, as Andrew pointed out, the unexpected money that the city pulled out of their TIF and dispersed the county some of it, too. We set 40% of that aside in a, because all buildings are going to need a roof. So we're trying to be frugal with your money. We're starting to plan with your money. We do keep your budgets in mind, but we're going to have to find a different tool than sales tax, than just property tax. And I also want to just say one more thing about local option tax because that gets talked about a lot. We have a local option tax in Missoula County. It's on your vehicles. It generates over $1 million a year, gets spread across different funds. But if you drive by where you rent cars in Missoula County, they don't have Missoula license plates on them. They have license plates from Kalispell, they have license plates from Phillipsburg. So we have to be careful when you think about a local option tax because people can figure out how to get around that. And I find that a little offensive, that those folks, you know, claim to be good corporate citizens and choose to save those few dollars. And, you know, it is, it's a hit to you, but we're all paying it. The others, motorhomes, think about those. You got a motorhome, you can buy a motorhome for $1 million, and you pay $2.75 in Montana, and Missoula County gets zero of that. So there are things like that that we need to be more honest about and figure out how to go forward. I thank you all of you for coming today to listen to the presentation. And apparently, that beeper's telling me it's time to shut up.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Curtis. If anyone can locate that beeping phone or device, that would be fantastic. Okay. Commissioner Rowley?
I don't have much to add to what Commissioner Curtis had to say, but I just did want to mention, since Andrew headed on one of his slides, the expert witness fees for the attorneys. That's another example of where the state can say, "We made big cuts," but one of those is expert witness fees. The state used to share those costs with us, and now the county just has to pay it by itself. And so, it was that one, right? Yes. So there are a lot of, when the state says, "Good for us, we made cuts," it's actually probably more often than not just passing unfunded mandates down onto the counties, and we can't get out of paying those things. If we want to convict these double homicide, we have to have expert witnesses in order to do that to keep our community safe. So we can't get out of these costs, whereas the state can pass these costs on to us and has done so. And so we don't make wide swathes of cuts, but we do make reductions. And when you look at the price of steel, we're working on fairgrounds redevelopment. The price of steel has doubled in a couple months. Luckily, we bought some beforehand, and now we're paying for it, so we got it at the cheaper price. But we have to, if we're going to continue doing projects, you know, if steel's going to double, those add significant costs. And asphalt continuously, it continues to raise at, the price of it raises much faster than the rate of inflation. And so we don't cut doing streets, but we certainly do fewer streets, you know? And maybe instead of doing 20 miles a road, we'll do 10 miles a road or 15 miles a road. So we do reduce services in order to try to reduce the budget, but it is this impossible balancing act of providing services and what that costs. And the cost of doing business continues to go up. And so I think, you know, without the voter-approved, a 1.98% increase with all the costs that are rising, with construction materials and big machinery and everything like that, those prices are substantial. And so I think a 1.98% increase is relatively moderate. I'm not happy with it. I have two kids in daycare. I also think that I can't continue to pay more and more taxes. But I think that we have to keep in mind that more of it was raised because of voter-approved levies. And the reason, as Jeanne mentioned, the reason in these national things it looks like we pay so much property taxes is because Missoula votes yes for everything, and they choose to tax themselves. And then it's not fair to expect the Board of County Commissioners to decrease all our essential services to counterbalance the fact that the voters continuously put bonds on themselves. And so I think there's a balancing act with that as well. Again, I did vote no to several more things that ultimately did get passed, and I would like us to see us tighten our belts a little bit more next year. But 1.98%, you know, is what, is not as bad as it could be.
Thank you. So one of a county commissioner's primary statutory responsibilities is the budget. And I think I can speak for all three of us up here that we take this process very seriously, and we've been at it for literally months. It's a big part of what we do in any given year, hearing from departments about their budgets, deliberating on those requests. At the end of the day, weighing all of those requests and making some tough decisions in some cases as to what we're going to fund or not. I want to thank all of Missoula County staff and department heads and the budget team for the many hours of hard work that they've put into this throughout the year. I think it was, at times, a painful process, even to the bitter end here. But I think we've got a budget that, contrary to what some may think, is pretty lean. I appreciate the work that our chief officers and department heads put into this in terms of connecting their budget requests to our strategic plan that we developed earlier in the year. And by and large, the requests that came before us were not extravagant, but were maintaining essential services or trying to address and be responsive to requests that citizens in this county brought forward to us. I, too, wish that we would have a different mechanism for funding government, government operations here in Missoula County. As Commissioner Curtis correctly pointed out, Missoula County is a place that many people across this country and around the globe love, and in some cases, may be loving to death. And we need to provide essential services to them along with residents. But unfortunately, those folks are contributing very little to our government operations. They might be dropping some money into lodging or other travel-related expenses, but they're not directly contributing to their impact on roads, their impact to our sheriff or 911 or other services that they might be tapping into. As both Commissioners Curtis and Rowley pointed out, we have unfunded mandates that we have to make choices to address or not. If it truly is a mandate by the state or federal government, then we have little choice but to follow through and figure out a way to fund it. In some cases, it's only on the surface discretionary. If we want to avoid a significant decrease in services to our community, which is going to impact directly the quality of life of our community, we need to make a choice if we're going to step up and fund that if the federal or state government will not. We have emergencies to respond to, and I think this year is a case in point with the flooding. We've more or less avoided the heavy smoke in the Missoula Valley as we experienced last year, although we've had some of that, too. But flooding occurred, and we had to make choices to respond to that, and we did. And we have to pick up the tab to deal with that. I think, as a number of speakers have pointed out, and I agree entirely, property value in no way, shape, or form necessarily equates to ability to pay. So if your assessment, assessed value on your property has gone up over the years because you've lived in your home over a long span, and property values in Missoula County have risen, that does not necessarily mean that your income has risen commensurately, which, again, begs the question, how are we going to figure out a better way to fund essential services? So I'd rather than just repeat myself again, I thank you all for adding your voices to this discussion. And some of you have submitted written comments, so thank you very much for that. It is all extremely helpful in our deliberations. And thinking ahead into the future, we welcome your input in government operations. And we actually do read your emails. I got one message from a constituent this morning skeptical that anyone would read and respond to her message. And I assured her very promptly, as quickly as possible, that we are reading emails, and we might not always agree at the end of the day, but we do take your comments very seriously. One last thing I will mention, and this came out in some of the public comment that we had heard, is a very understandable confusion over what projects are happening within the city of Missoula proper and how those are funded versus if you are a resident of Missoula County outside of the city limits, rest assured that your property taxes are not funding your most despised street or road project within the city. If you are concerned about your money, your property taxes, and you live outside of the city of Missoula, going towards park maintenance within the city, notwithstanding the Fort Missoula Regional Park, that is not the case. So just for clarification, I think it's important to give credit where credit is due or discredit where credit is due, depending on how you look at the equation. So with that, we can move into motions if we so. Mr. Sturmeyer?
I just wanted to point out very quickly that I changed my last slide to 6.3 mils of permissive medical levy, down from 6.59. There was an error on my part. I didn't update my last slide. It is correct in the budget.
Okay. The budget is decreasing as we speak, so, thank you, thank you, Andrew. So we're going to take the motions in reverse order and save the adoption of the final budget for last. And our first item would be related to permissive medical levy.
I would move to approve the increase to the permissive medical levy to 6.36 mils for fiscal year 2019 budget.
Second?
Any further discussion on this item?
Just one, so this doesn't mean that, what it does, it frees up mils that can be used for other things in the future, where the medical, permissive medical levy has to be used in a formula. So we're, you know, we could have used regular mils, but this makes them free for things other than medical. So I think it makes a lot of sense.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Next, we have RSIDs.
I would move to approve the budgets for the rural special improvement districts.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I would move to adopt the resolution authorizing the corrections to the tax increment finance district distribution, as was presented.
Second.
Any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, we have the adoption of the fiscal year 2019 budget.
And did you have any... Dave noticed a number that was wrong earlier today, but everything got fixed.
Yeah. Mr. Attorney, would you like to note that?
Yeah, there was a transposition in the beginning balance of the RS Relationship Violence Services budget, and it was listed as negative 117. That corrected it. It was actually the beginning balance of 56,000. So it is correct, and the budget is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Knowing that that has been corrected, I move to adopt the fiscal year 2019 budget.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The budget for the next fiscal year, which we are well into already, has been adopted. Thank you, everyone who came for this item. We will shuffle around here ever so briefly, and then begin our final public hearing of the day.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Okay. And folks can certainly stay for this, too. This might prove to be more exciting than you think. So this is a minor subdivision, so I'll open up a public hearing on the RJ Bar's minor subdivision. And we'll begin with a staff report from our very own Tim Worley.
For the record, I'm Tim Worley with CAPS, and this is RJ Bar's subdivision. A proposal for two lots on 2.9 acres, located in target range east of Clements and on the south side of Mount. The growth policy recommends residential uses at this location at a density of two dwelling units per acre. And similarly, the zoning here is two homes per acre zoning, or CRR2. This shows the subdivision layout, with north being to the left-hand side of the slide. Lot 1 is, or will be, a vacant lot, and Lot 2 has the existing home and garage. This slide shows improvements, again, with Lot 2 having a home and a garage, as well as paved driveway access. The new home would be built on Lot 1. I'm just going to go over a handful of conditions. First of all, this is what's known as a flag lot, so it has, let's just call it the handle of a flag. If I can get this to go the right direction. So where you see the driveway there, that's a 25-foot-wide portion of the lot that extends back. And where you see the dash line, we have a recommended condition that that be the established building setback line, and not 25 feet off the street. We also have another condition related to the irrigation ditch in the back, that the easement for that irrigation ditch be expanded from the proposed 10 feet to a total of 15 feet. That also requires a variance to vary from the standard for a 20-foot-wide ditch. And similarly, we have a recommendation for water rights, for this subdivision to go through the legal and administrative process to have water rights be allocated to Lot 2 only within the subdivision, and therefore Lot 2 would not have access to that ditch water. We have a couple RSID waivers. One regarding non-motorized facilities that we are recommending for the face of the plat, and also another waiver for connection to a community or municipal water connection. That's required because there's not going to be essentially fire flows here, because the proposed water supply for firefighting is sprinklers. We have a number of conditions related to covenant updates. Those include some corrections to the fire sprinkler language. There's also recommendations regarding water rights language, wood burning stove language, and weed management. And with that, I'll conclude. Staff supports RJ Bar subdivision, and the motions for the subdivision are on the top of Page 13 in your staff report.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Would the applicant or applicant's representative like to say anything? Come on up.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Andy Short. I represent Territorial Land Works. We're a surveying, engineering, and land use consulting firm. I am a land use consultant. I help people develop the property. This is all pretty straightforward. I guess the fun thing I'd like to bring up is we're increasing the tax base. So everybody left it and didn't get to see that part of it. The one thing we... I guess the one area where we would like some discussion is about the irrigation easement. When Roy was building that garage, he met with him, and they were basically said, "Hey, this is the distance we need for maintenance." And so he put his garage there. And the ditch, so just so everybody's aware, it's about as wide as this folder. And so we kind of believe that 10 feet should do it. And if you talk to the irrigation district, they will tell you that they don't need easements, that they have prescribed easements from long ago. Yeah, that's really all I have. I don't know if Roy's...
And so just for clarification, you're okay with the conditional approval of the irrigation ditch easement width, so the variance?
We would like it to be 10 feet. I believe from the border to the back of Roy's garage is 16 feet. So that's the border. So that easement would basically bump right next to the garage. So I guess we would like to maintain it as 10 feet, and not the 15 that CAPS is proposing.
So you would like the variance to be approved, not conditionally approved?
Right. Correct.
And do you have... did you receive any comment from the irrigation ditch company?
No.
And is this Missoula irrigation?
Yes. Yeah. In my conversations, I mean, when I said I didn't receive any comments, it was just conversations with Ray about what they'd like to see out there.
Could we pull it up on... do you have pictures of the ditch, or pull it up on Property Information System? Just to verify that it's the width of a folder.
Am I... Roy, am I correct in that? It's about that width, the ditch itself?
Yeah.
It's got an 18-inch culvert just above it. That's what it's served by.
Tim, and would you like to speak at all to the proposal of a 15-foot width as opposed to 10-foot as currently being proposed?
It is a very small ditch. It doesn't really even show up very well, except for the vegetation. I'm going to actually turn off the parcel there. It's this green line right here. I guess part of the recommendation is that if that 15-foot is outside of... if it's still a foot away from the garage, there's not really an encroachment issue. I guess it could be viewed both ways, I guess. We'd like to see it closer to the 20 feet, but yeah, it is a very... it's a lateral. It's not a main ditch by any stretch.
Okay, thanks. Well, there's no public here to comment, so I'll close the public hearing unless you have more that you want to add at this point. Are there...
Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Johnson, would you like to... Don't... Come on up to the microphone, please.
When I put the shop in some 15, 16 years ago, they told me, when I got to... I had to be 10-foot from the center line of the ditch. So probably 12 or 14 feet from the center line of the ditch. Threw in a little extra because I had a little room in the front, but I wanted it back as far as it's supposed to be. And now, it's from the border change, it's a little over 16 feet from the border to my shop. And the ditch people been through there. I've lived there nearly 30 years, and they come through. I maintain the ditch on my property, just so they don't be throwing all their junk out, and I got it hauled away anyway. So I take care of the ditch, and weed it and burn it in the spring, and it's never been a problem for ditch maintenance. And I had them out and told them what I was doing. They were actually out getting the ditch ready this spring. And the guy that runs the ditch department, I said, "This is what I'm doing. There's going to be a fence here like it used to be." I had a temper... I had one there for 15 years when I built the shop. Then that leasure went away, and then I sold it. And I talked to the ditch guy, and he didn't see a problem with it, especially with... there's plenty of clearance to do what they want to do.
Okay, thank you. Jean, did you have any... Okay. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have one question. Tim, on Page 5 of the staff report, under Criterion 1, conclusions of law, it says, "Adverse impacts to agriculture are mitigated through the required conditions of approval." Which conditions of approval is that referencing? I looked through the conditions of approval, and I wasn't sure what that was cross-referencing.
Well, I think part of what we would say is that keeping that ditch easement adequate would be part of that.
Yeah, that's about as close as I could come to finding any sort of ag-related.
It should have been worded more specifically than that. As far as actual conditions, it should have... I should have made reference to ag and ag water. I think that would be the lone one.
Okay.
So, Tim, if we were... if we were going to approve without the condition, we'd need to deal with Condition Number 3, and then...
I think what you could...
In that section, he was just at Condition Number 13, or Statement Number 13, Finding Number 13?
I think you could just approve the variance, strike Condition Number 3, and then, let's see, are you... let's see, Finding 13.
Would you strike Condition Number 3, or just change that to 10-foot?
Well, I don't think you'd need to change it, because that was the proposal.
Okay, got it.
So, yeah, if you just approve the variance, it would revert back to the 10-foot proposal that's on your plat.
Because I agree, this looks... I mean, this is just a little lateral ditch. I can understand why... I mean, he checked it all out before he built it. It doesn't seem to... it doesn't impede them from doing their work. So my finding... my discussion that relates to a finding, I guess, is that I think that the 10-foot irrigation easement on this small lateral ditch would be adequate. So I would move to strike Condition Number 3.
Is that a motion to approve the variance, essentially, as well?
Yeah, I just thought he did that first, and then went the other way. But, yeah, I'd do both.
Okay.
So is that a motion to approve the variance and strike Condition Number 3?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So that first motion, then, would just strike the word "conditionally," right?
Correct.
Do we need to have that read into the record, what that actually...
Probably.
Okay.
I would... So I guess we start over with our motion. I would move that the variance from the requirement for a 20-foot-wide irrigation ditch easement in Missoula County Subdivision Regulation, Section 3.1.5.2.2(c), be approved based on the finding fact in the staff report and discussion by the commission.
I guess this is a do-over. So do you want a second?
Second again.
Okay, she seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then I would move that... I guess that just leads to striking Number 3, or do you need another motion for that, Tim?
Well, I think it's...
Since we started over.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I would move that we strike Condition Number 3.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And just to interject, does that address the concern that you had? Okay, thank you.
And then I would move that the RJ Bar's subdivision be approved based on finding fact in the staff report, as amended, and subject to the recommended conditions as amended.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, RJ Bar's subdivision is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there any further business coming before the commission today? Seeing none, we'll be in recess.
Andy, would you like to...